All right, good evening. Can everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, I am very excited to see so many of you out tonight. This is an extremely important topic that we're discussing. I'm going to be very open with all of you. We are not having any public commentary tonight. Part of the reason is, I don't have answers for everybody yet. We sat in on a webinar yesterday. All of us here sitting here, including Mr. Rosner, we sat on a webinar and listened to people from New York State Education Department, and we listened to what they had to say, and we left more confused than when we entered the webinar. And I'm going to be very blatant and honest with all of you. So I still have questions. I have questions that were posed and that they seem to think they answered, but still didn't seem like we got an answer that made us feel better about it. So, we're going to start today with Mr. Rosner giving a presentation of what we all think we are at right now with this regionalization and what it is, just to educate everybody and so that we're all on the same page. And what you see tonight is all that we know as of right now. But I can say, and I'm speaking for myself and my other trustees will chime in later, but we are not okay with what we see so far. So this is why we are trying to put a halt to what is going on right now. So, I just wanted to make everybody understand where we're coming from and why we're having this meeting. Okay? So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Rosner and let him give his presentation.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone, nice to see you. And for those of you that are watching online, I put this together with Mr. Spinato. This really just outlines what the State Education Department is calling regionalization. And then I took about eight or nine slides to list for you all of the concerns that I have as the superintendent in East Meadow, and some of the concerns that many of my colleagues have across Long Island. So, and I will give time at another meeting for questions and answers. That's absolutely going to happen. This comes directly from the New York State Education Department. Regionalization refers to a broad tool for addressing student needs and operational efficiencies through shared resources grounded in a process of continuous needs assessment and cross-district coordination. That comes directly from what the State Education Department put out. I did not write that. So, we're talking about things like shared staff, advanced coursework, extracurricular activities, industry partners, shared support services. This is all under what they feel a regionalization plan would look like. So addressing student needs and exploring different efficiencies across New York State, specifically Nassau County. The state directive, according to the plan document, the component districts superintendent, which is me, must work for the sole supervisory district, the BOSI superintendent, to develop thirty-seven regionalization plans in five clear steps. So really what that means is we have fifty-six districts. It's probably not changing because I haven't clicked it. You have to click that in order for that to move, yeah. That's the other, that's what they told me. We have fifty-six school districts in Nassau County. All fifty-six right now are in the process of filling out this first part of it, which is the strengths and needs tool. When we first looked at it, Mr. Russo, myself, and Mr. Spinato, something just didn't seem right with what we were filling out. It just seemed like a lot of information that we didn't understand why they were asking for this information. This is the first step in this regionalization process. All fifty-six districts will hand it in to the Nassau County BOSI superintendent, who will then put together his process for putting together a regionalization plan. And you can see some of the dates here. They actually just extended the deadline to December first, but interim progress reports, regionalization plan submission, renewal, and approval, and the planned implementation for September twenty-twenty-six. So this is work that we're currently filling out. It's a survey. It's about sixty pages long. We're working on this now for at least four weeks. I can't take up school time to do this, I have other responsibilities here, so does Mr. Spinato. So we're doing a lot of this off-camera, if you will. And it's a lot. And that's a lot of people have complained about. A lot of this is data they already have, so we don't understand why we're actually having to do this. They have this data.
Can I just ask you a question? Or make it clear? I think the strengths and needs tool that you're filling out is giving information about what kind of classes we offer, courses that we have in our district now, things like that.
Yes, test scores through the years, financials, transportation, special education, a little of everything that is going into this survey. It's an extensive, extensive survey. This all came about on September twelfth, twenty-twenty-four. New York State Education Department claims that conversations have been going on since the spring. There was more than enough time to use the proposed rulemaking process that it didn't have to go into what's now called emergency rule. Emergency rule was used, basically what I feel, was to bypass input from the stakeholders, which is us and you. Mandates, right? All these mandates are not needed to have what they're just calling having conversations from district to district. I do that already. I do. We went to the district not so far from here to look at some of the security upgrades. I don't need a mandate to do that. I use my colleagues, I use some best practices around Long Island to see what I could bring here to East Meadow. We do. We do. We do share a lot of things, and it's for the good of the students. And that's okay. But to do this through emergency rule was the first red flag that was thrown up. Anticipated to become a permanent rule in January of twenty-twenty-five. So now this comes right from state ed. This is their rationale. The department recognizes the need for a strategic approach to addressing education disparities, fiscal constraints, and operational inefficiencies across school districts in New York State. Regionalization can help solve these challenges, creating equitable opportunities through partnerships among school districts, Board of Cooperative Educational Services, which is BOSI's, and other stakeholders. And I wasn't at this meeting when, but the Commissioner of Education clearly said, "It's an opportunity to think about the ways that we could be helpful, and by that I mean collectively." And so I was really asking everyone to really do their best thinking in ways that we can, in tough times, share the wealth and work.
So if I can interrupt, I was at the New York State School Board Convention, so was Ms. Toledo, and we sat and listened to Betty Rosa give her speech, and that is exactly what was said. "When people are in need, why don't we share our wealth?" Which is a lovely sentiment. However, we still have students in this district that are in need, that we need to help before we help other people. So, that's kind of where I'm at with that.
So the BOSI superintendent, and it's what's called, is enforcing the plan. I'm just, I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, but, "If such metrics are not being met, the department or district superintendent, which is BOSI's, shall compel the component district, which is us, to amend its section of the regionalization plan to achieve desired outcomes." So I am not supervised by the BOSI's district superintendent. He's not my supervisor. This is the supervisor here. You're my supervisor. I answer to the community. So this is a change in BOSI's supervisory responsibilities. This is a big, big change. And again, we're talking about enforcing the plan. "The district superintendent shall act as an intermediary between the department, BOSI's, and component school districts," which is us, "to facilitate the successful execution of educational initiatives within the sole supervisory district." Again, this is a matter of coming in, doing the plan, being supervised for this plan, and we still don't know what it is that's going to be in this plan. I don't know what I'm going to be responsible for. And this is actually going to the Board of Regents in November. There has been no input in this plan from Boards of Education across New York State. They've had no input in this at all. Boards of Education are not even mentioned in this rule. Boards of Education are the only entities that can agree to spend money or share resources. There's no other way to do it. So here are some of the potential consequences. Boards of Education could be forced to use taxpayer resources on students outside of their community. A reduction in opportunities for our students to provide equitable access to our programs for students outside of our community. This sets the stage for what could be consolidation, which could eliminate positions from administrators, teachers, and support staff. Those are potential consequences. So this is the part that I put together for the board that I thought was important to share as a community. And again, I'm presenting to the board, but I also show the community this. "I have serious concerns about the emergency rule and the proposed amendment, which circumvents collaboration and transparency." There is no emergency in effect that warrants calling this ruling an emergency. We would have welcomed an opportunity to dialogue with the state regarding the regionalization conversation prior to the deadline for the needs assessment. We've had no conversations. I've been to a few meetings, and the board here will tell you, the one last night was just, "I still have no answers that we were looking for, and we were shooting questions off in the chat, and nothing really got answered." So I have a very serious concern about this emergency rule and how it was put in place. Consolidation and local control, BOSI's oversight. Is the state setting the groundwork for consolidation of school districts? I don't know. The language in the Register, now for those of you that don't know, the Register is a weekly publication that provides information on rulemaking activities, executive orders, public hearings, and regulatory agendas in New York State. We get copies of it, and it's pretty extensive. The language in the Register is concerning and suggests that local control will be diminished. There's no way to say that otherwise. It says it right there clearly, that local control would be diminished. "It seems to expand the role of BOSI's beyond its traditional function." How will BOSI's involvement affect the governance and operation, the autonomy of local school boards of education? How will regionalization impact local district autonomy, particularly about budgeting, staffing, and educational programming decisions? Is there a risk of certain districts losing control over key decisions such as curriculum and staffing as a part of this regional body? And the proposal seems to expand the role of BOSI's beyond its traditional function. And we asked for clarification about what this new oversight looks like, and we did not get any information. Stakeholder engagement. Will there be formal opportunities for Boards of Education, parents, and community members to provide input before final regionalization plans are adopted? This is something that has been near and dear to me from the moment I stepped here, which was, "We may have an issue, but you're going to hear about what that issue is, and we're going to work together to go through that issue together." There has been no stakeholder input at all, which goes against everything that we've been trying to establish here. And how does the New York State Education Department plan to ensure transparency throughout the process? The approval process. How exactly will the approval process for regionalization plans work? Will decisions be made by a simple majority or a supermajority? Or will unanimous consent be required amongst all of the component districts? Remember, there's fifty-six Nassau County component districts. What happens if some districts oppose the regionalization plan but others support it? Are dissenting districts still bound by the decisions of the majority? No answers to that yet. This is a big one. Special education. There is no mention or no consideration of special education or ELL in the document that I have read, cover to cover. Will districts with large population of special education and ELL students be required to send children to component districts? And not answered. And I have to tell you, I'm just going to go back to this for a second. This is about the third time since we've rolled out either Race to the Top, Common Core, APPR, state testing, where there has been no mention of special education and/or ELL students. Which just, to me, is, I don't understand that. This is a big one for the community, and again, these are not deficits, these are some of the concerns coming from Ken Rosner. Will there be changes to the way funding is allocated to districts under a regionalizational model? If so, how will distribution, how will resource distribution be handled to ensure equity across participating districts? Will wealthier or better-funded districts be required to share resources with less affluent districts under this model? Outcomes. Are there any long-term studies or data demonstrating how regionalization will positively impact educational outcomes for students? That was a question that was asked, not answered. And has any analysis been done specifically for Long Island districts, given our unique population, funding structure, and geography? Again, asked, and no answer yet. And then appeals process. If a district opposes the proposed regionalization plan, is there an appeals process? What resource do local boards have, if any, if they feel the district is being unfairly impacted? Once a regionalization agreement is approved, will it be legally binding for all districts involved, even if leadership or board composition changes? What mechanisms will be in place to enforce these agreements over time? Now, this is supposed to be reviewed once every ten years. And this is a real big one. How will the proposal affect staffing levels and labor contracts? Will regionalization require changes to existing teacher and staff agreements? And how will those negotiations be managed? And last but not least, why is the plan's success based on one assessment every ten years? Local districts assess and adjust continually, always moving forward. And I always end the presentations with, really, this is just about kids for us. And I think that, from what I've seen and what I've heard, there is a lot of concern about what a regionalization plan is. I think we have a right to be concerned. And those were some of the things that I outlined, that gave the board the presentation ahead of time. That's really all that we know right now. You saw the meeting last night. Again, with those, there's two assistant commissioners and Bob Vecchio, who did a nice job facilitating that meeting, but still with a lot of unanswered questions. So, that's it. By all means, ask me anything you'd like.
I think one of the things that we've discussed a bit is the vagueness of the language. That, in their proposal and the literature that they've sent out, they've not specified anything. And so, for me, it's, the language can't be trusted because we don't know what it means. And so we don't know how it's going to impact any of the things that you mentioned.
We were looking for an example. Like, can you just give us an example of what this may look like? So, here's one. Let's say in East Meadow High School, there's AP Statistics class that's given, right? And there's seventeen kids in the class. And another district neighboring, pick one, Levittown, let's say, they don't offer that class. Does that mean now the sharing of resources and staff and money that five to ten kids could come over from another district into the AP Statistics class? Well then, who pays for that? Who's responsible for the scores and all the accountability, right? You have, this could go in a lot of different directions. So for us, when we put together initiatives, we do, literally do a T-chart. I sit with my group. What are all the good things? And then what are some of the unintended consequences that could happen? And listen, how can this go sideways? What are some things that could go wrong? It's real, that's really straightforward when you put together a plan. We don't have any concrete examples of what this may look like.
The other thing that they didn't mention last night, that as you're speaking is literally occurring to me right now, how does this impact the teachers' unions?
So that's a great question, and I would never say that I could answer that definitively. I can't imagine any New York State Education Department initiative that would supersede labor contracts that are already in place and signed in agreement in our district. Yeah, that would be a major problem. Again, I'm going to stay in my lane, but my lane tells me that that would be a real tough one to overturn labor contract.
Like, just as a, for instance, different districts have different caps on the number of students in classes.
Correct.
So if we have a cap, and Levittown sends over their, whatever, eight, nine kids, and that exceeds our cap, then that's impacting our negotiations with our teaching staff.
We could definitely go in so many different directions with this. Just for the record, I chose Levittown because they're right next door to us, and that's what I saw. That was just an example. But that would be something that people asked last night. "Well, give us an example of what this could look like." Look, I'm an educator for life. This is my thirtieth year. I believe that every child deserves a high-quality education and access to the best teachers we could possibly find. But it can't come at the cost of the taxpayers of East Meadow. Only for East Meadow.
I think it's something where we've spent the last number of years making sure that we could be a high-achieving district and have put the time and energy and community money towards that, and we're now reaping those benefits. And Ms. Rico Simeone had said it, said it outside this room, which is, it feels like we're being penalized for excelling.
I, I have a couple of questions, and I really, I'll be honest, as possible and as transparent as possible, I don't think I'm going to get the answers that I'm looking for here at this board meeting, because I don't think there's anyone here that has them from New York State. And I'm still going to ask these questions if anyone can answer them. But this is scary, folks. This is scary for a district like East Meadow. You know, take any other, any community that might have less funding, whether it's Levittown, Uniondale, whatever, any community in the area, and for them to now be theoretically using our resources, or possibly in reality, having to take our resources from our taxpayers and from our students, that's scary. So, my first question is, really a broad question, and says that, it's basically that this proposal seems to, this is my view, disregard the will of the local community. So, I don't know if Mr. Rosner can chime in on this, or who can. How can our taxpayers make their voices heard to Albany and their wishes respected? We're going to do everything we can as a board, but, you know, what can be done?
So, we are, Mr. Rosner and myself sat down this week. We talked about this letter and about a communication through, with the community. We wanted to have this meeting first, vote upon the letter that we're voting upon tonight, and then a communication will go out to everybody with links of ways you can click on and write letters and say what you want to say to the state. So we are going to get you that. We just wanted this meeting to happen first, give as much information as we could, let you see us vote on the letter that we're sending, and then that communication will go out, I believe, tomorrow.
And, now, this is getting a little more specific. And again, I'm skeptical as to whether I'm even wasting my time asking these questions, but this is what's on my mind after everything I've seen about this so-called regionalization. The BOSI's budget is comprised of separate budgets for administration, program, capital costs, things like that. That's currently, that's the way it is now. So after state aid and federal aid is subtracted from the cost of operating a Board of Cooperative Educational Services, a BOSI's, all the districts have to share in its administrative and capital costs. And it's a weighted proportion formula, so I don't know what's going to change here, and I'm wondering if anyone knows. Is there anyone here sitting here that knows? Or is it, am I, I guess I wasted my breath. That's why, that's even more of a reason why this is such, why we call this emergency meeting, because this is so theoretical, this, not even theoretically, this is happening in reality, and this is, this could have a tremendous impact on high-achieving districts like East Meadow. So I guess, my last question, I may not get an answer to this either, and that's not the fault of anyone here, it's just, it's New York State's fault, to be honest with you. But something was mentioned about personnel and teachers' positions. Can BOSI's now dictate the district's position on collective bargaining negotiations? Does anyone know if that's, no, okay. That's what, that's what, yeah, that's what, yeah. So, I just, I'm just going based on my notes here, and, all right, I, I think this, this might be a fruitless effort. Not because of anyone up here, just because New York State has kept us so in the dark about this. So I'm going to rest my mic for now.
If I could, real quick, because we're here to discuss ultimately the signing of a letter, right? On behalf of the board, as Mr. Carl just said, that we could all discuss this letter as a board together to send that letter. But Mr. Carl and Ms. Toledo signed a letter drafted by the Coalition for New York Board Members, that they've represented themselves on behalf of the East Meadow School Board in direct opposition to the reorganizational meeting, which provides that the board president shall be the sole member who is permitted to speak on behalf of the Board of Trustees. The Coalition for New York State School Board Members seems like, or at least is akin to a Moms for Liberty group. Moms for Liberty started as a campaign against mask mandates and vaccine mandates. They became a group that has been deepening divisions among parents for making students' education more difficult. The Southern Poverty Law Center, a civil rights The Southern Poverty Law Center, a civil rights organization that tracks extremists, terms Moms for Liberty, an extremist organization. They've engaged in anti-student inclusion. They've opposed LBGTQ+ and racially inclusive school curriculum, and have advocated for book bans. They're affiliated with the Proud Boys, a neo-fascist organization. Regardless of whether the board agrees or disagrees with such letter, this is an example of these two individuals not acting in or with the desire to work as a board, and are out on their own to push our district to fringes of education, and not what is in the best interest for the majority of students in our community. These two trustees have yet again made a district issue about them. Mr. Carl and Ms. Toledo's desire to try and drive this board for political reasons, while they speak out of the other side of their mouth, saying that they want to keep politics out of schools and out of the board. It should be noted that Mr. Carl, over and over again, has stated that politics have no place in our schools or this board, but is employed by Nassau County in a politically appointed position. I bring this to the community members so that they know where this board, where board members are speaking from. I have, for the past eight years, advocated for what is in the best interest of the students of our district, regardless of political leanings. I have made it clear when I did not agree with the leaders of our state, regardless of such leaders' political parties. I feel that is the responsibility, and really the obligation, of board members to act in the best interest of the district, and not be swayed by political, or in this case, be a shill for a political party or extremist organization. This district has grown leaps and bounds since I became a board member, and we are now a high-achieving district, as much as Mr. Carl has said that there's so many issues with this district. I am not interested, as a parent of three children in this district, or as a community member, or as a trustee, to see all we have achieved be destroyed because two or maybe more board members want to push an extremist political agenda.
Now that we've heard the fake news, folks.
I got this. One, how dare you talk about David like that? His intentions are pure, his loyalty runs deep, and I am damn proud to have him right here. Another thing, I don't owe you an explanation, and I'm not going to give you one. To the community, the Coalition was started by three school districts that were against school masks. It was, can you not talk when I'm talking? It was started by three school districts that were against mask mandates, hybrid learning, and they fought against the state, and I respect school districts that push back against the state, like we are doing tonight. As for the letter I signed, it had a disclaimer stating my individual right to sign on behalf of my beliefs. It was a letter of support. It was not a letter of action. It does not require a resolution or a vote. And being on the Board of Education does not relinquish my freedom of speech, and neither do you.
And I agree with that.
Great. We're not here to hear you. We're here, we're here tonight about regionalization. So can we circle back to that and not talk about me?
Mr. Melnick, everyone listened quietly while you spoke. If you could extend the same courtesy, because, no, 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 please.
Everyone, mics off, mics off, mics off. This is extremely getting out of hand and unnecessary. The thing that is unnecessary to me is, truthfully, and it doesn't look like that, all seven of us are on the same page, I believe, on this regionalization, so I don't know why we have to lead with the angst and the negativity when we are on the same page, and that's what we're supposed to do as a board, is work together to do what's right for our community.
So why didn't we know about this? Hold on. Because, no, hold on. Ms. Rico Simeone, real quick. Did you know about?
Mr. Melnick, if you're going to be a bully, please stop.
Stop with the bully, David.
I got it.
Ms. Rico Simeone, did you know about the letter before it went out?
I will gladly be able to explain to you what's going on. When I was part of the New York State School Board Convention, I met lots of different people from different school boards there. That was part of the point in me going, getting to speak to people that are around our community and other local school boards, and hear what they're doing, and what they're planning on doing, and what's coming down from the state. I did speak to them. I knew what their plan was. I chose to do what I chose to do, and they chose to do what they chose to do, because we are individuals. We were voted here as a board, but they are individuals, and they are allowed to choose to sign their letter. We were given now the letter to everybody. If you saw it in your email, it was sent to everybody, not for me, from the Coalition, and they are allowed, they are asking other people to join them. I will say right here, I am probably going to join them at the end of tonight's meeting. I wanted this meeting to happen first with my community, that was my choice, but I will be, as more people are signing on, we will be signing, I will be signing on, as an individual, and anyone on my board is, on our board is allowed to do that. It does not have to come as a board sign. It can come as just an individual that's signing something they believe in. But again, I want to circle back, and I will let you speak in one minute, I want to circle back to the fact that we are all, we are all here because we are all trying to fight something that we don't agree with and that we feel left out of. They use words like, oh, this isn't a top-down approach, it's a bottom-up approach. That's what they were saying last night. But we're the bottom, and they're not asking us anything. So it is a top-down approach. They're saying that districts are in the driver's seat. Well, if we were in the driver's seat, we would have a lot more answers for you right now, so clearly, we're not in the driver's seat. They said things like, they want local boards to engage their community. Well, how can we engage our community if you haven't told us what we're supposed to engage our community with? So we are all in agreement with the things I just said, and that's what we're here for. I understand everyone's saying what they need to say, but it is getting a little bit out of hand, the way that we're speaking to each other, when we're here for one purpose and one purpose only, is to sign, is to approve a letter that we all agree on.
Dr. Luce. So, I want to have a calm discussion, and perhaps some of our discussion needs to be with one another. I don't, per se, object to people signing on to a letter as individuals. What I object to is doing so without communication with your colleagues. And I think that we, as a board who spoke at great length about working together and being transparent with one another and made a commitment to doing so, before signing on to that letter, maybe we wanted to. Give an opportunity to have a conversation, and that's my objection to this.
Thank you. And that's fine, we can have that discussion. That is a valid point, wanting to be able to discuss what we're doing, but is also, at the same time, I don't know if there's a way of running everything by each other every time we do something individually. I'm not, I'm not sure, like, if I choose, I know I'm watering this down, but if I choose to go to a Clark football game and I don't tell you all I'm going, I know, but...
That's very different than using your name as a trustee.
Something was signed that said, East Meadow Union Free School District.
But it said signing as an individual.
But it said, then it shouldn't have said, East Meadow Union Free School District.
But that's her title, is that she is a trustee for the East Meadow Union Free School District. That's her title.
Mr. Melnick, it says, I have it in front of me, the undersigned trustees signed as individuals, individuals of their respective boards. It does not say that they signed as a board. And, 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 let me finish, please. Because, because I was respectful, I was respectful, I was respectful.
No, I don't. I don't.
I was respectful when you were speaking, Mr. Melnick. Please, please, Mr. Melnick, first off, I don't answer to you, and with all due respect, Mr. Melnick, I was...
I'm not asking anyone to answer to me.
I'm not going to dignify it with a response.
I'm not asking anyone to answer to me. I'm asking to be one of seven and not someone who is excluded from decisions that are happening. And I do take issue with Ms. Rico Simeone knowing about this and not sharing it with the board, because as president, that is your obligation.
I am not required to share with you everything someone does with, as an individual.
If they're signing something on behalf of the Board of Education.
They're not signing, you're mixing words.
But they did.
You're mixing words. That's not what they did.
Go look at that letter.
I did, and he just read this.
They absolutely did.
Mr. Melnick, please do not yell at Ms. Rico Simeone. This is inappropriate of a board.
You're yelling.
Listen, we can have a calm, we can have a calm conversation. Dr. Luce showed perfectly how she can express how she feels in a nice, calm way. I understand how you feel. I don't feel that they signed on behalf of the board. You do. That's where we differ, and that's okay. That's where we're at, and we're going to have to talk about that. And like Dr. Luce said, that's something we're going to have to discuss, not here, because what we're here for right now with our board, with our community, is to show them that we are here for you, we are here to protect your children, our taxpayers, and we would like to do that by telling the state that we oppose what they are planning to do right now. That's what we're here for. So, if everybody would be okay with me moving forward to vote on the letter, I would absolutely love to do that.
Yes, if there's any more questions for me.
If there are any other questions for Mr. Rosner, from any of our trustees, on his presentation or on regionalization.
They weren't really clear last night, next steps and timeline, other than the timeline of implementation. Do you want to talk about if they renew it?
So I would say that it would be in our best interest to continue to complete the survey, it's not submitted yet, and let this play out over the next few days. I have the minutes from the meeting last night, we were reviewing that, and again, all the superintendents are meeting to find out how they choose to handle each individual district. But I would say, just to, for everyone to stay the course, let's listen. I know there's something going on tomorrow with legislation that'll be presented to refute everything that's in this regionalization plan, so I think that's picking up some traction on the other end of this, so, you know, no knee-jerk reactions from me, this is all, this is all I know right now, and I'll do everything I can to keep the board informed and let you know as things come up. So I think the next step would be to continue to fill out that application, because, you know, I never want anything to be held against East Meadow for not submitting something that is legally required, so I think that we have to at least stay that course.
Please, everyone, make your voices heard. This community needs to speak up. We're doing the best we can as your board. Please make sure that Albany and everyone who's affected by this knows what's going on. That's the request I leave you with today.
In the letter, we'll be, you can see it there, but that's the email address, there's a comment, commentary period. I'll make sure that I get that to you. This will be posted on the website, and then we'll take the next steps together.
I would suggest to everybody, contact your local legislators and discuss your concerns. We really don't know how this is going to affect our district. If we do have to bring children in from other districts here, are they going to require us to send ours out? We don't know. There's too many unopened, too many open-ended questions. They didn't answer anything last night, and I'm very uncomfortable about it.
I would also add, Ms. Whitman's statement, hold your legislators accountable. They are supposed to represent you.
Any other questions for Mr. Rosner? Okay, so, we are going to go to our action for the regionalization letter to New York State. Be it resolved that the Board of Education agrees to send the attached letter to the New York State Education Department as written and as reviewed by the board. I would need a motion. Dr. Luce, first. Mr. Carl, any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. We are going to adjourn to executive session, reason being for the purposes of seeking advice from our legal counsel on what steps are coming next. So we thank you so much for coming. Motion to adjourn to executive session. Ms. Whitman, second. Ms. DeLuca, all in favor? Seven oh. Thank you so much. I really appreciate you coming out tonight for something so important. Greatly appreciated.